I'm calling a meeting to order for the Montecito Planning Commission. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almost, yep. Okay, Mr. Velobos, will you please announce the DV coverage?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSPTV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Longfalk, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of Montecito Planning Commissions are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSPTV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call, Commissioner Gottsinker.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Idelson.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioners Burrows and Overall are absent today.
Okay, let's have an agenda status report.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning, we just have one item on the agenda and we are ready to move forward on that item. Would you like me to turn to the projection report?
Yes.
Okay. We are scheduled next to meet on July 25th, and on that date, we have, Mr. Banks also coming back to you with another appeal, it's of the Offutt addition Cabana and Pool land use permit. So that'll be before the Commission on July 25th, as well as the return of the special events ordinance that your Commission reviewed last year. On August 22nd, we are tentatively scheduled to hear the agricultural buffer ordinance. That's the only item on your agenda so far that day. And then September 26th, we'll be back again with Prescott, new single-family dwelling appeal before your Commission. And that's all we have projected out today.
Okay. Under public comment, that's any item that is not on the agenda, and thus far, I have one public comment request to speak by Mr. John Thorndike. Do I have a second?
Let's see. Good morning.
I get confused sometimes. Montecito.
What are we, Montecito today? Okay. And I didn't look to see if we had the others in the back room. The thing I want to talk to you about is, I'm just going to read something to you. From what you have, you can pick up from there on this. My family and Thorndike, Matilla and company and I are caught in the middle of a turf war between the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors and the California Superior Court at Santa Barbara, California, who 22 years ago awarded me case 176081, a quiet title, which was very costly, cost me $100,000, in a water and boundary case, and they didn't resolve the water. Note, the county council wanted the court administrator or the court judges to appoint a court master, and the county refused to act without this court master. And finally, as I understand, the county proposal, when they made a proposal to me, the only one I've got, the county only wants a purchase of the US EPA's $632,000 portion of my parcel. Is that correct? That is all I own of that upper US EPA facility, aside from the road and well. The lower facility is on the Lundie, mostly on the Lundie property, to the east of Thorndike Orchard Entry. This situation leaves a dangling parcel below and above to the National Forest. My parcel 15 never changed taxes, it was always the same, it was always from across the road and to the National Forest, abutting the National Forest. They took the middle of the property and deny that I own the rest of that. How can they do that? That's my question. How can...
I can answer it for you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Mr. Thorndike, the, we don't have the jurisdiction to even entertain this issue. You're outside of our area, and this isn't the forum to resolve this. We'd be happy to hear it if the Chair permits, but there should be no expectation that we can help.
Then I gotta take it to court, and that's a shame, because I'm in the mid-80s and vigorous, gonna last a long time, it's gonna cost a fortune for the county. I don't like to do that to the county. I tried to give that 20 acres, upper 20, to the county, and they wrote me a nice letter saying, "Thank you, but no thanks, we don't anticipate taking, we don't want to take it off the tax roll, we don't anticipate having a need for it." Now, they want it, and at the time, the administrative officer and I drove up there in a county car and looked at the entry, and he said, "We'll put in a turnaround for parking, for getting the post office up there, that far, if they'll do it." The post office tonight, it said, "We don't have enough people to serve up there at this time." Now we do. Since then, we've got a whole lot more people. John Gosovich is up there, the McKeewans, Oscar Peters, Lundie, mystery woman, and she tried to get me to go to her place the other day, and I didn't make it in time for her. So we've never really met. Well, thank you very much for your time, and thanks for the response, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thorndike. Okay, let's go to, as far as public comment, the other one I have, I think is...
No, that's for the next lady.
Yeah, it's pertinent to the issue, so it isn't under public comment, it's a request to speak. Okay? Okay, then we have the Planning Commissioners informational reports. Does anybody on the Planning Commission have information to report?
Comment to staff, I was recently in Venice and had, and there was a seminar on restoration of historic properties, and had dinner with an architect, and if we think we have a burdensome program, it takes a lifetime to get a permit over there. It does, really. So we're liberal here in Santa Barbara.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just had a question of staff. I know that, I'm assuming, Ms. Black, that you are going to be submitting a package of comments to Caltrans just prior, coming up next week, I think, is when you're working on that, that's when the deadline is. And I'm wondering when this Commission will be able to actually view that work product and, you know, for our own education. It's gonna be a long project and go on forever, but I'd still like to know what that bottom line was as far as all of the comments that were submitted at that point.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, on your agenda today, you have the comments that you made on the 101 project, it's your minutes of June 6th, so you'll see your comments. We are in the process of compiling all of the comments from the county, including the two Commissions. We will be submitting a letter no later than July 9th, and we'll make sure every one of the Commissioners receive a copy of that letter. So you have all of the comments that were forwarded by the county.
Okay, right.
And then you'll see everybody's comments as the final environmental document is managed through Caltrans.
Okay, no other reports from Commissioners? Let's move to the minutes of May 23rd. As you can tell, I'm getting over a cold. I just got back from Alaska, and I think I got it on the airplane. So on the minutes, do I have any comments? We were all here.
I'll make a motion for approval for the May 23rd.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll have to be silent, I was absent on that, so...
No, actually, Mr. Phillips...
Is this June 6th?
No, no, we're on May 23rd, and it says that we were all here.
Oh, indeed. Okay, I can second that, then.
Okay.
Okay, great.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Director's Report.
No, no, no.
What?
We have June 6th minutes.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, we have two sets of...
Ah, 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 thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, these are the minutes that reflect your comments on the HOV project.
Ah, yes, yes.
So it was that special hearing that you participated with the County Planning Commission on.
So the question comes up for me is that, given there would only be myself and Mr. Idelson, because Mr. Phillips was not at that present one, but we don't have Mr. Overall and Chairman Burrows, can we approve a minute, minutes with only two voting members here? Yes?
Mr. Chair, since two is a majority of the voting members present, yes, you can.
Okay, so with that said, I will make a motion for the, to approve the special hearing meetings for June 6th.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, now the Director's Report.
Mr. Chair, I'll be giving the Director's Report this morning, Dr. Russell is out of town. I just really have two hearings to report on. First of all, the Board of Supervisors, as you're very aware, conducted budget hearings a week and a half ago, and did conclude the budget adoption process. The department's budget was adopted as it was submitted. We submitted a budget that had quite a few reductions in positions, and as a result, we'll have two less people working in our long-range planning division, which is probably the division that's of most concern to your Commission, because it's the division that gets the things done that you'd like to have done that are not permit-related. In terms of the permitting division, we are maintaining our staffing level at the levels you've seen most recently, and can increase as workload increases. We have some unfunded positions in our budget, but we will have even less capacity in long-range planning to address issues that your Commission is interested in and has struggled with when reviewing our work program, so I wanted to report on that. And then the only other item I think that's of interest to your Commission is the hotel incentive program that was heard by the Board of Supervisors yesterday. I don't know if you've heard the outcome of that. The Board did approve, or conducted a first reading and approved that on a 3-2 vote yesterday. There will be taking the matter up for second reading on July 10th. They adopted the first option that was recommended to them, that being a 70% incentive to new or renovated hotel owners if they apply and go through this program for a 15-year period. The remaining 30% of TOT would remain with the county, 20% in the general fund, and 10% for tourism marketing programs. So that's the action the Board took. The hotel that spurred this, obviously, was the Miramar Hotel. Mr. Caruso recommended this type of an approach to provide an incentive for him to begin constructing his hotel. This has not authorized him to participate in the program. He will actually have to apply under the ordinance when it's in effect, and then that will be a separate decision. So this is just really the first step in the potential use of this type of an ordinance for the Miramar Hotel, and we'll keep you informed as things develop.
Was there another request to raise the TOT amount in the county? Could I hear that?
Mr. Chair, yes, there was. Supervisor Lavenino, I believe, brought an item. It was the last item of the day, and I did not hear the results of that particular item. I don't know that the Board took any action yet, but I can certainly find out and try and report to you before the end of your meeting today. And that's all I had to report, unless you have questions.
Any questions? Okay, let's move on to our standard agenda, then. Item one and the only item, huh? Okay.
The following is a hearing on request of Douglas and Fiona Stone, considered the appeal case number 12, APL 10, appeal filed on May 30th, 2012, of the decision of the Montecito Board of Architectural Review to grant preliminary and final approval, case number 11, BAR 201, and the decision of the Director to approve the land use permit, case number 11, LUP 475, and to determine the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15303 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, do any of the, any comments, any visits, any communication with applicants?
Nothing.
I did do a drive-by, but I couldn't, it was, I couldn't get onto the property, so I just kind of drove around and looked, but can't see much when you're on the road.
Okay, I did make a call, and I did visit the Stones' property, and I did visit the applicant's property, too, and I just walked on that property and walked around, but I, on the Stones' property, I called the Stones', and we made arrangements to visit that. So that's my comments. So I guess we can go on with the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Brian Banks from the Development Review South Division, I'll be presenting for you today. The project before you today is an appeal of a Montecito Board of Architecture Review approval and a Director's Land Use Permit approval for the Big Red Properties Accessory Structures and Landscaping Project. The project site is located at the corner of Romero Canyon Road and Featherhill Road, as you can see outlined here in red, and for reference, the appellant's property, the Stones' property, is located immediately south of the project site. The site plan shows the accessory structures that are proposed and the landscaping that is proposed. Those accessory structures include a bocce court with trellis of approximately 600 square feet, new pool patio area south of the existing pool, that includes a pool pavilion structure of approximately 144 square feet, and you can, oh, my mouse went away, here it is, you can kind of see here a 15-square-foot outdoor fireplace structure there. The project also includes a new barbecue counter area on a permeable patio area south of the dwelling as well. For reference, the existing residence is located here, the existing pool located here, existing detached garage located here, and an existing cabana located here. This plan is actually the approved site plan and landscape plan for the project. As you can see, it locates a number of large trees, vegetation screening along the property lines, kind of a mixed palette of shrubs, trees, and screening hedge along the south property line, and again, the appellant's property, the Stones' property, is located immediately south of the project site, and then as well, some interior landscaping, including some large specimen-type trees here around the pool pavilion, some smaller ones here. Also for reference, there are some large specimen oak trees here at the north part of the property, and a large coastal live oak here in the interior of the property that is an issue that the, an issue area that the appellant's raised that we'll get into. The project's been determined to be exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15303. That section exempts construction of a limited number of small accessory structures, such as the residential accessory structures included in the project. The project is consistent with the Montecito Land Use Development Code and the Montecito Community Plan policies. The project received preliminary and final Montecito Board of Architecture Review approval on May 21st, and the Director's Land Use Permit approval on May 29th, and the appeal was filed on May 30th. The appellant's appeal issues are listed here on the slide, in the following slide, and also enumerated in section six of the staff report. The main appeal issues are related to the compatibility of the proposed project, the accessory structures and the landscaping in this case, with the neighborhood, also the proximity of the structures to the appellant's property line and their dwelling, and the proposed landscaping's impact on the appellant's mountain view opportunities. In their deliberations, MBAR considered the Stones' privacy and mountain views by approving a screening plan along that shared property line to the south of the project site that provided, the goal was to provide privacy and screening, but also allow intermittent views of the mountains to the north. So there was some consideration by MBAR in terms of the palette, the spacing, the species of the vegetation along that shared property line, to, again, balance the screening of the accessory structures that are proposed and actually the project residence, and balance those goals with allowing some intermittent views for the Stones to the north and to the mountains. Also, MBAR considered views of the neighbor to the west, and we can look at that site plan again, and I can describe that in more detail if needed. That neighbor was concerned also about the potential view impacts of the project, and MBAR considered those in their deliberations. However, that portion, that panhandle portion of the lot consisted exclusively of their driveway, and so when MBAR considered that portion of the landscape plan, they really looked at an effective way to border that driveway, but also allow mountain views. They didn't, they weren't as concerned with the screening and potential privacy impacts of that, because it's a driveway, and it wasn't the project residence, and actually it's limited opportunities for anyone ever to develop that based on setbacks and the configuration of that portion. So the fact that it's a driveway led them to approve the landscape plan in its existing configuration with one condition, well, actually with two conditions, that that portion of the driveway, the trees be spaced at a wider interval than was shown on the landscape plan. I believe approximately 18 to 20 feet was the goal there, and also to limit the height of the screening hedge along that border to 10 feet. So again, the goal to provide some mountain views, but not as concerned about the privacy aspects of that portion of the parcel, given the driveway location. Staff recommends that the Commission deny the appeal and uphold the Montecito Board of Architecture Review's approval and the Director's Land Use Permit approval. The also, also, I'd like to add that, for consideration, there were specific findings or conditions that MBAR added to the project that were included as a condition of approval of the land use permit, so I would like to point out that the condition of approval of the land use permit includes the specific findings that MBAR required to approve that project, and those should also be considered. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Okay, do my Commissioners have any questions at this time?
So, Mr. Banks, what you're saying is that the required, or the conditions that were added at the last, at the end by MBAR, was the height of the existing Russe hedge shall be at 18 to 20 feet, is that, so that's the existing hedge, that's, that is the condition there you're pointing to, and the private hedge shall be maintained at 10 feet, lighting shall be eliminated from the trellis, and the trellis posts shall be planted with this, those are the conditions that were added?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gottsaker, that's correct.
At the time of the land use permit? Okay, great.
Actually, at the, at the time of MBAR's approval of the project, so those portions of the project were not actually shown on the plans, and actually at their approval stage, the approval of the project, those conditions were added. So we actually took out a pen, wrote those specific...
Which is now reflected on what we have in front of us.
That is correct. I did want to make a, make a point to the Commission that those were specific conditions that were added to allow the MBAR to approve the project.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next step would be to go to the appellant? And ask for their presentation? Is that right?
Mr. Chair and fellow members of the Commission, my name is Doug Stone, and my wife and I, my wife Fiona and I live at the property that Mr. Banks was describing. Mr. Banks, could you just bring up the site plan one second, because I just want to make sure that we're, we all understand the one thing that we're talking about. There were two conditions put on by the MBAR that relate to this part of the property here. There was, there was another, Mr. Reynolds, who lives here, and his wife were talking about their mountain views over, battery's dying on this. Is there another one? Over this area here. What we're talking about is down here. Thank you. Yeah, this is, is the lower part, and the MBAR did not put any conditions on the hedging and screening and mountain view there, and that's one of the main reasons that we're here. Although the reasons are numerous in our appeal, in the formal appeal, it really boils down to three reasons that we're here. First, that we be afforded the dense screening that generally is required when properties overlook another property. The second is that due consideration be given for our mountain views, and we understand that those are private views and not public views, but even under the guidelines, due consideration is supposed to be given to those views. And finally, our concern is with the placement of three entertainment structures very close to our property, which is right here. Our house, although it does not show on here, is right here, and this is all backyard with a pool here, and they've got one bocce ball court here, which is the entertainment center. a pool here, and they've got one bocce ball court here, which is the entertainment center, and then they propose two more entertainment centers here. And what we were always saying to the MBAR, and there was some support on the MBAR, is that why do these need to be so close to our property? There is also a vertical, so again, here, there's our pool, this is the house, the bocce ball court is right there, and then the pool pavilion and entertainment center's right there. The, the concern also is there is a vertical difference between their property and ours. I think their grade level's probably 10 or more feet above ours, so they're actually looking down on it. With respect to the visual screening issue, the first issue, we've previously inconsistently stated to the county and the MBAR that the structure should be screened so that we can't see them. We believe that as they're planting it, we will get that, but we're not sure that the way it's been approved, that it's guaranteed. And we also don't know who the final owner of this property is going to be because it's a speculative property that will be sold. And so although the Fronzes have stated intent to provide certain screening, we don't know what actually will occur, and we don't know who will own the property. We, we tried to work with the applicants to come up with an agreement as requested by the MBAR, but every time we would talk about a particular plant material, we'd meet with their, their landscape designers, they would then change. For instance, they had talked about putting toya on, on, I know Commissioner Gottsaker, you're quite familiar with, with plants. We weren't that familiar, we researched it, it seemed like it would be an appropriate screening material, and then they decided they wanted something else. So we moved on to something else. Our concern is having something that's dense down below while having, still maintaining our mountain views. So that was the, that was the difficulty that we were having. In one of the MBAR hearings, the MBAR said that the, quote, "The hedge material on the southern property line should meander and use layers. There is enough room to double the width of the hedge material," close quote. This comment made sense to us, but it was ignored in the final revised landscape plan as the plant materials neither meander nor are doubled. With respect to height, although from what we have, from what we've, we've read about some of the proposed materials, it seems that they can reach 25 or 30 feet, which will in essence take away our mountain views. I do not recall in anything in the landscape plan or in the MBAR's final findings, anything that says that we should have our mountain views protected by any kind of spacing or intermittency. Any spacing requirements deal with this part of the property and these trees here. There's no restrictions at all on what they can, what, what the height is here or maintaining a view either through spaced trees or because they're capped out at a certain level. I also want to point out one other thing, which is the, the concept of a view easement, and, and we, sorry, we did discuss the possibility of a view easement, and the appellant, the applicants expressed some, some openness to discussing it. We submitted a proposed view easement at their request, which was ignored, and so it went nowhere. But the concept of protecting private views in our neighborhood is pretty well-founded. The MBAR ordered it with respect to here. My wife and I had to grant, or granted a view easement to our neighbor to the south here. In fact, the county imposed a view easement, there's two more properties down here, and there is a view easement in the conditions of approval for this lot right here. So what we're, what we're looking for isn't without precedent for this area, and is, and in fact, nothing that we haven't done ourselves. With respect to what we were looking for from, from the MBAR to protect, we were looking for a dense screening here up to about 16 to 18 feet, and then a height limitation above that level. That would provide both their, them being screened from our property and us being screened from their property, but it would maintain our mountain views. All we're looking for is the same kind of thing that the MBAR granted to Mr. Reynolds, our neighbor, on the exact same property. So again, and I'm sorry to repeat, but I'm still baffled by what, how it happened. At the MBAR meeting, the MBAR protected this property and this owner by limiting the height of this hedge here to 10 feet, and by limiting these trees by expanding the spacing to 18 to 20 feet apart. And they also, there were several conversations about what those trees were going to be, and they, those trees were changed out from, I think it was originally peppers, which they were concerned could go to 50 or more feet, to roos, which I believe does not grow nearly as tall. So there were two accommodations made to this neighbor to protect their mountain views, and there were no accommodations made to us to protect our mountain views. The, the third concern, as I stated, has to do with the overdevelopment of the property and the proximity of three entertainment centers to our, to our property. Actually, sorry, before I go to that, can I just, I want to show a few pictures. Can you show, bring up picture one, please? This is a prop, this shows their property from our property. This is a, this is a picture taken from our second story to them. Now, there has been some screening, it's not going to look like that, and these are before the proposed screening, I understand that, but this shows the importance of having the dense screening down below. Next picture, please. This is a picture of the bocce ball court, sports court from one of our children's bedrooms. And that is not taken with a photo, with a telephoto lens. Next picture, please. Yet another picture from our other, one of our other children's bedrooms of the bocce ball court and the house beyond. Next picture, please. And again, this is, some of this is existing, this is a hole that needs to be filled. There has been a lot of talk about filling it, but again, we just need to ensure that it's dense enough that those windows do not look down on our property. Next picture, please. And again, this is just one, this, this picture shows how at the, these trees here, these plants here are 15 to 16 feet high from their property. We, we did have one meeting with the applicants, they had their, one of their landscape people measure those, and they're 15 to 16 feet. So you can see at 15 to 16 feet how they provide the screening that we need and that they would need looking onto us, but if you go much higher, then you start to lose mountain views. Next picture, please. This gives an idea, this is the existing specimen coastal live oak that was referred to. But, and obviously that's, that's there and that's fine, but what we want is to maintain these views here. Next picture, please. This is a before picture. This was taken in, as we were first clearing our land. You can see that, this is that specimen coastal live oak, and you can see that our views are completely unobstructed of the mountains. That the, the property was previously an avocado, had many avocado trees on it, and, and the avocado trees didn't have the height to cause any, any blockage. Next picture, please. This is just another picture, another before picture that shows again what the views were. Next picture, please. And just one more, this was taken a few years later. Again, this was the existing proper, the existing house on the appellant's property. It's now a two-story house, so it's up, it's up about there. But again, you can see even with these 15, 16-foot trees, plants, there's the wide-open mountain views. Next picture, please. And that's just one more, this was taken from a second story, but again, this was the existing house, and you can see how wide open everything is. Next picture, please. This is a picture that begins to show what we are now looking at. These trees have not even been begun to grow yet, and you see how we're now looking at, this is a present picture, at basically a green wall, and we're starting to lose the mountain views, and with no limitation on how, how high these can grow. And you can see, this is a tree that they planted, I believe Mr. Banks referred to it, this is one of the specimen trees that they planted. I don't know how tall that tree is, but it will just continue, continue to grow. It was not on their original landscape plan, it was planted prior to approval of the landscape plan. And you can see if that tree continues to go and, and the crown is just going to take away, and as these fill out and grow up here, you can see what we're looking at. Next picture, please, or what we're not looking at, rather. This is a picture taken from closer. As you can see, the mountains are back there, but I wouldn't call that a mountain view anymore. Next picture, please. This is that tall tree, this was before they planted some of the hedge material here, but it gives you an idea of just the massive scale of that tree that they put in. And again, it hasn't even begun to, to take root, much less grow. Next picture, please. And just one more, again, how you can see that the outline, that the mountains are all but completely obscured. Next picture, please. This is a story pole of the pool pavilion entertainment center that they want to build. It's, I'm not sure how many feet it is from the property line, but it's, it's not very far. As you can see, the grade difference, I think their grade is about there, and it drops down a good 10 feet, so they're over, looming over us with that. The next picture, please. Again, this is the pool pavilion here. And even if properly screened so that you can't see it, we're very concerned about the noise, and under the community guidelines, noise is one of the things that we're entitled to protections from in terms of protection of privacy as well as views. It's not just, the, the guidelines are specific about noise being considered as well. Next picture, please. This is just one picture that really gives you a size of the, the bulk and scale of the, the sports court trellis. It's, it's, it's quite large. And again, very close to, very close to our property. Is that the last picture? Yeah. So now, with respect to the sports court trellis and the three entertainment centers they want to put close to our property, it, it feels to us that the property is being overdeveloped. The, the, the plan originally provided for, the original approved plan provided for the house, the pool cabana, the pool, a garden shack, and a new garage. That's five different structures on the property. And this second modification that they've asked for includes five more: a pool equipment shack, a sports court trellis, a pool pavilion, an outdoor fireplace, and an outdoor barbecue grill. It's 10 different structures on a 1.6 acre property. Interestingly, the county points out in its staff report that the development on the property is about 7,600 square feet. Under the guidelines for house size, that's over 40% over the guidelines. And I, again, I, Fiona and I don't understand how that happens. There was no discussion at the MBAR about the total square footage, there was no discussion about the total guidelines. I haven't seen a property, and I'm not as familiar as it with you, but I've seen quite a few properties be approved in this town, I haven't seen anything 40% over the guidelines In terms of, in terms of asking this commission to review this, I do want to point out that the MBAR recognized most of these things early on in the, in the procedure. The MBAR expressly commented, and it's in the minutes in front of you, that the, the applicant, "Consider relocating the pool pavilion." That the applicant, that the fireplace appears isolated and out of place, that all accessory structures should be pulled away from the south property line, and that the applicant was advised to work with neighbors on the, on the pool pavilion and fireplace. Those are all in the minutes, are all in front of you, and none of those things happened. And what we don't understand, and what we're asking you to reconsider, is to merely apply the things the MBAR did point out and did say they would apply, but ultimately did not apply. There's one final thing that I just want to point out, and I, I'm not even sure it's, it's in front of you, because I know this is a de novo hearing, the, the condition of no lighting on the bocce ball court trellis, if it's in front of you, and regardless of any other decision that this commission makes, we respectfully request that that be maintained. It's our understanding that sports court lighting, in fact, the guidelines I think are expressed, sports court lighting is prohibited in, in neighborhoods, and, and this is a neighborhood and it's, it's a sports court. So I don't want, in, in everything that's going on, I don't want that to be lost, that the elimination of that lighting, at the very least, is essential, and I think in complete In summation, the, the, the request for the five additional structures is out of proportion in scale, and, and with a neighborhood and with a property itself. It seems like the only reason that these entertainment centers have to go here in the minds of the applicant is that there's no place else to put them on the property because of overdevelopment. The, if there's not enough room to support it, then they shouldn't be approved. Final point is, I, I do want to point out that this is a speculative house, this is a house intended to be sold, and I think that the, that the neighbor's interest and rights with respect to it are as important, if not more important, and I feel like our rights have not been protected by the MBAR's proceedings. There's one final point I want to make, and then I will rest for a moment. The, at the, at the last MBAR hearing, there was a lot of testimony given about a charitable aspect of this project, and I just feel it's important to point out. I believe that the, the applicants intend to allow the house to be used for, for a charity to sell tickets to have people go through. That's noble and great, but it really has no relevance on this proceeding, and has no relevance on the matter. I do not believe that one fewer ticket will be sold if you disallow any of this, people who would be coming to the house for charity and to see a beautiful project, and it won't be affected by providing us the screening, providing us the views, and eliminating some or all of these entertainment centers. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, would this be the appropriate time then for the applicant to, or the representative?
Mr. Chair, my name is Steve Ameron Connor from the Brownstein Law Firm. I'm here representing the applicants this morning. I'd like to introduce them to you if I could. The property is owned by an entity that is owned by Mr. and Mrs. Dennis Franz. Dennis and Joanie Franz are sitting here in the second row. Also with us today is Philip Penestri, who's the general contractor on this project, and Robert Adams, the landscape architect, and Alicia Harrison, our land use planner. So we have the folks here who are prepared to answer any questions that the commission may have. I wanted to just check and be sure that the commission had received the letter that we submitted yesterday, which I believe staff has distributed to you. That letter summarizes our position, which is that we support the staff recommendation and the conclusion of the MBAR. We have a PowerPoint presentation, which I'd like to briefly go through, and then I'd like to respond to the appellant's points. Next slide, please, or do I have control? Do I have it? Oh, thank you. So this is our own aerial photo of the property. This is the house in question that Mr. and Mrs. Franz have basically rebuilt. This is the driveway area, the panhandle, so-called, and it will actually exit, vehicles will actually exit onto Heather Hill over here. This is Mr. Reynolds' house. This is the Stone residence and their swimming pool and their backyard, and this is the property line between the properties. All right? This is a view of the backyard of the property in question. This pool is, as you can see, already built. This is a stone wall. This is a stone wall at the back of the pool, it's back here. This is the trellis and the bocce ball court. What we've done here is to superimpose a rendering of the proposed shade pavilion at the end of the pool. As you can see, it goes in here. This is a photograph showing the landscaping in pretty much its present condition, and you can see it better here. We believe that the pavilion at about 11 feet will be entirely screened from view, from the stone property. This is the trellis over the bocce ball court, and we believe that the screening there is complete as well. The idea that this structure at 11 feet somehow, and this one also at comparable height, is somehow going to be either visible, is going to loom over the backyard of the Stone's house, I think, is not warranted, given what we can see in this picture. This is, again, taken from the residence, and you can see the screening of this structure. It will be complete. In his presentation, Mr. Stone suggested that the total development that we're proposing is somehow out of scale with the neighborhood. We put together this table comparing our property, which is this one, to his property, which is this one. The zoning, as you can see, is the same. The parcel size is not all that different, 1.62 acres versus 2.04 acres. The residence size is interesting to compare. Ours is 5,472 feet, his is more than twice as big. We have a garage, he has a garage which is nearly twice as big. We have a cabana, and he has a cabana which is more than twice as big. We want to have the pavilion, which I showed you on the earlier photograph. He has a residential second unit of over 1,000 square feet. We would have a bocce ball court, an outdoor fireplace, an outdoor barbecue. What's not on the list is the pool. He has a pool, which I guess if we want to use the term entertainment center, constitutes an entertainment center as well, because it attracts people and it creates noise. This is the total of the development on the two properties. As you can see, his is more than twice ours, even though the parcels are not all that different. So we don't think that, at least if you compare these two properties, that it's fair to characterize our property as experiencing or being proposed for overdevelopment. Let me answer just a few other points, if I may. He, in his appeal, has suggested that we should, they should have a view easement. We've actually reached out to him on a number of occasions to talk about a view easement. Most recently after the M-Bar, I called him myself and asked if we could discuss a view easement along the property line, something that would assure him of adequate long-term screening and a height limit. And I made a specific proposal, and he said he would think about it, but I hadn't heard, I have not to this day heard back from him about it. So I'm presuming that the proposal we made was not satisfactory. And what we had proposed is to cap the height of the trees along the property line at what they are right now, so that they wouldn't grow higher. And that there be adequate screening so that he wouldn't see through and we wouldn't see through. We have the same interest in privacy that he has. But the interesting thing about private views, from the point of view of this commission, and this is something you grapple with probably every meeting that you have, where a property owner is concerned about and legitimately expresses concerns about the impact on their private views of something going on on a neighboring property. But the policies that you are charged with implementing make that a discussion item for those property owners. Those property owners are supposed to solve that problem between themselves. It's not something legally or by policy this commission can do anything about, because private views are just that, they're private views. In California, a property owner does not have a legal right to a view over somebody else's property unless they've acquired it through a view easement or some other legally enforceable means. And the policies of this commission, that this commission enforces, simply don't give you jurisdiction to grapple with the problem that he's brought to you. And for good reason, because you know how intractable these view easement issues are, these view impact issues are. Likewise, the issue that he raises about noise. We all live in some reasonable proximity to our neighbors, and we all experience, to some degree or another, noise from our neighbors and their uses of their houses or their yards. And it's one of the consequences of living in a community where you are close enough to hear your neighbors. I imagine that when Mr. Stone built his pool, his neighbors experienced some noise impact because people were using the pool. But nobody has proposed or suggested that we require that pools be eliminated from backyards because they attract noise. Kids in particular, who love making noise in pools, and this is one of the things that that happens with pools. So to suggest that the bocce ball court should be moved, or the barbecue should be moved, or the outdoor fireplace should be moved, because it will attract people to socialize, I think is to open up a can of worms for this commission, that the commission does not and probably should not want to have to grapple with. That noise is just part of living in a community, in a suburban community like Montecito, it's going to happen. So I would suggest that there's nothing, there's no reason in policy or in law to give that particular issue any particular weight. Mr. Stone argues that he should have parity with Mr. Reynolds, that Mr. Reynolds, and I'll, I'm going to roll it back to our overhead. The Reynolds property, as I mentioned, is here, and he came to the M-Bar asking for some protection of his view in this direction over the driveway. And the M-Bar reached what we thought was a reasonable compromise, and that is, the M-Bar said that the trees planted along this driveway should be of a species that will not grow more than about 25 feet, and should be spaced far enough apart so that from this property you could see through, you could have some occasional views across this property. The reason that that solution works at this location is because the Franzes were perfectly okay with it, because those trees along these lines would not have any effect on their privacy. Their privacy is something they enjoy from their house and from their yard. From the driveway, not so much. And so they were okay with the idea of offering this concession to Mr. Reynolds and agreed with the M-Bar when it was proposed. The original proposal for the trees along here were species that were going to, could grow a good deal taller, and that's what Mr. Reynolds was concerned about, and that was adequately addressed. That situation is different from the situation along this property line between the Stones and the Franzes. Because here, the balance of the equities is different, because the Franzes have an interest in their privacy, have an interest in having it, this landscaping, fully screen the Stone's house. And so the fact that he didn't get what Mr. Reynolds got from the M-Bar, I think simply reflects the fact that the cases are different. The cases are materially different, because there's a lack of a privacy interest in the question of the landscaping along this driveway. The photographs that Mr. Stone showed you, as you could probably see from comparing them to our photographs, which we took this week, were taken nine months ago and longer ago, and really don't reflect the current state of the screening between the two properties. We think the screening is complete and adequate, and actually quite consistent with what the M-Bar asked for. As you can see, they asked for a variety of different kinds of species, they wanted it feathered, they wanted it not to look like a solid wall, and I think that we have succeeded in doing that. And frankly, the Franzes are interested in the same thing. They want to have adequate screening, and they don't want to have something that looks like a solid wall. They would like to have something that has some variability to it. So I think I've touched on all the issues. I'd be glad to answer any questions, or to ask any of the folks on our project team who are here with us this morning to answer any questions that you might have. We, just to sum up, the M-Bar, we think, reached a reasonable, reasoned compromise between the interests of these competing neighbors and competing interests. And we would ask that you turn down the appeal and approve the project as it's been brought to you by the M-Bar and as recommended by your staff. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Amerikoner?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. The, Mr. Stone's testimony was that the M-Bar was silent as to screening along the joint property line. I think that's correct. I wasn't at those hearings. Did you object to screening there? Is that, was there?
No. No, no, we don't object to screening along the property line between our property and the Stone property. In fact, we intend to have it. We intend to maintain it. We think for both the privacy interests and for the value of both properties, that kind of screening is a good idea.
So that issue can be resolved. In fact, you, your testimony is that you proposed a view easement which would, which included a screening issue, I'm sure.
Yes, that's right.
I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question. In the photographs that you submitted, I'm assuming that the roof of the, the red tile roof that we, oh, there it is, we see it right there, that is the Stone's property?
Yes.
That is their red tile roof?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Now, it seems to me that this, the matter of the screening along that property line, could that be resolved by both parties here, in that what Mr. Stone is pointing to is that he just wants a cap on the height of that screening? Right? That is what you want?
Yes.
That you want, and that that's what you say is missing?
Right, if I may?
Yeah, you know.
I think both the present owners of the property, the Franzes, and we are in agreement with the screening at, up to a certain height, yes. But again, because they won't be the ultimate owners, we just want to make sure it's memorialized in the conditions of approval.
Yeah.
But I think we can reach agreement on the screening up to a certain height.
Yeah, I mean, there's some procedural issues that I'm kind of dealing with, is, you know, so that's kind of like, you know, we have to hear it in a certain context, as opposed to the M-B-A-R. And what you're saying is that there's just something missing in the conditions at this point, and I'm saying, well, we could probably fix that today.
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, I was hearing earlier.
If staff likes, let me, lets me, don't do that.
From Mr. Amerikoner, that there was a proposal for a view easement sent to you, and there was a desire on the part of the development there to provide a view easement. That is, is or is not acceptable?
The, he presented it in a verbal, verbal manner on a phone call. It is correct that he did. We had provided a written proposal of a view easement, which is still unresponded to. My recollection of the conversation I had with him was not that they would cap it at the existing levels, but that he wanted 25 feet, which is about five to seven feet more than the present levels. And he was excluding two specific plants. One was an elm, and I forget what the other one was. But there were two specific ones that would not be capped at the 25 feet, and the 25, we're looking for 16 to 18 feet. And his proposal was 25 with exclusions of two large plants, so that's my recollection of the conversation.
So there's still quite a bit of spread between the two of you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not our issue.
And if I might point out one other thing on landscaping. The plan before you today includes landscaping along that property line. It includes specific plants at specific densities. It's all there. And we, assuming this is approved, that's the plan we have to implement. That's the requirement. And so the idea that we wouldn't have landscaping along there is precluded by the plan that's before you, because we have to have that there. That's part of the proposal that's before you.
But that landscaping plan was implemented before the accessory structures were added. Is that true?
No, 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 it's, the accessory structures are on the same landscaping.
And the landscaping plan acknowledges those structures and is aware of those structures, right?
Yes, that's right.
All right.
You know, to me, I've watched these things develop, and I've lived in Orange County, always lived on 20 acres of property, so anything smaller than that seemed like a little place. And I came here to Montecito about almost 30 years ago, and the houses keep getting taller, and the people want private views, and they want protection, screening from the neighbor. And it's a challenge, it's a real challenge for us to try to provide people with all of these needs on a relatively, these are small pieces of property, two acres, and to build a house of the size that they are, people build them on the highest part of the property, and then build them in two stories, in extensive two stories. So it's quite a challenge for us. I hope you appreciate that.
We do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you do rebuttal, why don't you take any public comment there might be, and then go to rebuttal?
Okay, I have one request to speak by Joyce Sippel, and I want to notify anybody else who would like to talk, to provide us with a request to speak on this. So if you'd like to speak, Ms. Sippel?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joyce Sippel, and I own the property at 646 Romero Canyon Road. I've lived in the neighborhood for 15 years. I have had an opportunity to review the plans before you today, and to see the meticulous, spectacular job that Mr. and Mrs. Franz are doing on their home. In my opinion, this house and its garden represent a stunning, fabulous addition to our neighborhood. I am pleased to be here today to support this project. I noted that Mr. Stone, who owns the property just to the east of me, has objected to the trellis because it was built without a permit. The contractor has explained that he did not realize that a landscape feature like a trellis required a permit. But this seems to be the elephant in the room. It's the strange irony in Mr. Stone's complaint, because a few years ago, he started building his swimming pool and removed lots of trees and vegetation without county permits or approvals. The county had to issue an order stopping construction and requiring, requiring that he move the pool. Frankly, it is easier for me to understand how someone could believe they could build a trellis without a permit than believing they could build a pool without a permit. In any event, Mr. and Mrs. Franz have done the right thing here. They've promptly applied for the necessary permits. I personally feel their trellis, their entire property, is a beautiful, simple, tasteful addition, and should be approved. Thank you so much.
Do you have any more speaker? Okay, then I'll close public comment.
Mr. Chair, now would be an appropriate time to go to rebuttal.
Okay. Time for rebuttal, then. Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. I'm not, I'm not sure that it's extremely relevant to this, but since Mr. Amerikoner mentioned the size of our property, the development of our property, it actually was inaccurate in two very important respects. Our house, by the way that the county measures the house, is not 11,000 feet. The property was in front of you guys, not that I expect you to remember it, but about 37 or 3,800 of those feet are in a basement, and would not count toward development the way the county does it. There was also no cabana. The cabana was eliminated as part of The cabana was eliminated as part of the matter that Ms. Sipple was referring to. It's interesting, though, that, that there was mention made of our excavation of rock clearing, which may or may not have been in violation. It's all resolved, it's all fine. But as a result of that, our pool was moved, and because of concerns voiced by a neighbor with respect to noise and interference with their privacy, the county, due to county procedures, we moved our pool. And we moved, if you want to call it an entertainment center, you can call it whatever you want, we did move it in response to neighbor concerns and county concerns. And what we're asking for here is not, only not without precedent, it's not without precedent for us. Also, with respect to noise, I do want to remind the Commission that under the View and Privacy Protection Section of the Community Guidelines, it includes the location of noise-producing elements, and that they should be located or buffered to minimize noise impact on adjacent properties. The Good Neighbor policies also state that consideration should be given to privacy, quote, "in all respects, including noise and lighting." These are in the county guidelines. I'm not making this up, and Mr. Mayor Connor can argue all he wants that noise, noise is part of living in a community. I agree that noise is part of living in a community. But changes can be made to projects to protect neighbors and minimize the noise interference that one would get. In connection with our moving our pool, we also, to protect noise from neighbors, built an extensive wall to abate the sound from the pool to our neighbors to the, to the west. And again, things can be done to, to respect the neighbors and minimize the impact of noise. If, if you can, Mr. Banks, do you, can you get to that picture, the overhead picture of, I think that Mr. Mayor Connor had, of the, of the properties, the overview? Yeah. Yeah. So just here, this curved wall here runs the entire length of the pool, is six feet high, and was designed and implemented to protect the noise. This is the Sipple property here, and then from these two properties, this is Mr. Reynolds, and these are the Rosses. And this wall is to bounce the noise back toward us rather than having it be there. So again, I just want to point out that what we're asking for is not without precedent. In fact, it's directly has impacted our, our development. We are willing, should the Commission instruct, to try to work one more time with, with the Franzes to resolve this. But we've been unable to in the past, but perhaps with additional pressure from this Commission, something can occur. But to, to date, we've been unable to do it. That's, that's all I have at this point. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor Connors? Connor, sorry.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of facts I want to add to the record for your consideration. Number one, the shade structure, the pavilion that we're talking about, is proposed to be 21 feet from the property line at the end of the existing pool. All right, so if, if you're thinking about, well, where else could it go? Where else would you put a shade structure but next to the existing pool? And that was the purpose of it, is to provide shade for the people using the pool. Secondly, the proposal that Mr. Stone made to us about this view easement, he asked that the view easement be in an area 50 feet from our property line, that from the property line to a point 50 feet into our property, all of the vegetation would be covered by this height limit, not just the vegetation on the property line, but for 50 feet inside. And that we found to be simply too burdensome, that we said, no, that's way beyond what may be needed to adequately protect your interests. And so we have proposed a view easement just along the property line. I continue to believe that the best way for neighbors to resolve those issues is to discuss it among themselves and not to have it imposed by the county as a condition of approval as a height limit. And the reason is because this is a very slippery slope that you end up going down. If you begin to impose conditions on projects to protect private views, which have not been consented to by the property owner involved, there's really no end to that for you. Every, I imagine, most cases coming before you are going to raise that same issue and will use this one as the precedent. And so I would urge the Commission not to take that first step down that slippery slope. Let those issues be worked out according to the Good Neighbor policies in your, in your plan, and let the neighbors work that out themselves. Thank you.
Well, building a structure without a permit is not a Good Neighbor issue. I mean, it's not, it's not Good Neighbor consistent, usually.
No, and that was, that was a mistake, which we have readily recognized and immediately proceeded to fix. And we're, we are sorry for that mistake.
Is there, is there indeed another reasonable site for that court, that Bocce Ball Court?
In the backyard?
Yeah.
Likely...
Mr. Reynolds wouldn't agree, but it looks like there's a little spot over there.
Yeah, but that is also away from the yard, what is really going to serve as the yard for the house. The spot over by Mr. Reynolds' property is at the far end of a fairly long driveway, and it's very far away from what will be the, the main yard for the house. And that's why it is where it is. And it's, I don't know, what's the distance between the Bocce Ball Court and the, 12 feet from the property line?
Yes.
It's 12 feet from the property line. Oh, and on the lights. One last issue on the lights, the, there is a condition approval, of approval, that the MBAR imposed, that there be no lights on the trellis. And we, we were not crazy about that, but we agreed to it and decided not to appeal that or bring that to the planning commission.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, folks, now we're...
So Steph, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
At this point in time, where we are right now, the, the trellis over the Bocce Ball Court has been permitted or not permitted? I, because it's like, this is really confusing here to me. It's like, what, what I'm, what I'm really dealing with today?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gostaker, I'll try to clear that up. The trellis, approximately 600 square foot Bocce Court trellis, was constructed without the benefit of a permit by the, by the county. The applicant has come in, or came in several months ago to essentially self-abate. So that is a violation as it stands today. However, approval of the land use permit would validate that structure, and therefore there would not be a violation moving forward.
Okay, so it actually is on the books now, right now, as a violation then? And it will be cleaned up by this, whatever motion, whatever actions we take today, that violation will go away?
That is correct. There would only be two options, removal or permitting of it in its current location and size.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, let's look at what our, go ahead.
Well, I have a couple of, I still have some other questions that I'd like to ask.
Oh, you do, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Stone referred to, and this may be the landscape architect's purview, referred to a large tree that, in the photographs, that was like quite larger than what the proposed screening is. Can somebody tell me what that tree is and where that tree is located and...
That, let's see.
Can you introduce yourself?
Robert.
Who are you?
Robert Adams, landscape architect.
Thank you.
Hi, Claire. Okay, so here it is. This is, this is almost Parvifolia, the evergreen elm. It's a specimen. It has, it's, it's, has filtered light through it. It, it's right in the center. It's right here.
Oh, it's that one? Okay. Yeah, that, I don't get that that's what he was talking about.
What are you talking about?
That tall one, I believe, is one of, yeah, where Mr. Banks is putting the arrow. It's one of those two that were planted with a big crane. You brought in a big crane and planted it, and it's probably 30, 35 feet at least already.
Okay, that...
Mike, do you remember what that anchor tree is? Because the, the Chinese evergreen elms are here. What was that? I can't quite read that. That was a specimen tree, right?
Yes, it was.
Well, it had to have been, given the size we're calling out. Do we know what it is?
I'm trying to draw. Yeah, it's this tree right here. I'm sorry, Mike Sicilio from Sicilio Landscape.
I know what it is.
The Kurjung Bottle Tree.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's a open tree that's very light and...
Yeah, I can see that from the photographs. I just couldn't tell what, what the species was. Okay, okay. Now, as long as I've got you, that's fine, that answers that question. Given the size of the landscape plan that I'm dealing with at my age becomes very difficult, but whatever. I'm trying to fi, figure out what species of plants that we actually have called out on the plan, which are within that 10-foot setback area along that, the shared property line. I can't really, I can't really tell, I mean, from the plan, if there's...
Okay, well, let me, let me describe the, the existing condition. There are a number of coast live oaks on the south property line, on, on both sides of the property line. There are a number of Pitisporum undulatum, the Victoria box, that are existing on both sides of the property line. We have used the evergreen elm in the center, as I was pointing out. We have a few peppers here anchoring this corner. There's actually a pepper on Mr. Stone's property, just over the fence. So it's a full variety of things, of tree species. This is actually the oak and Victoria box tree existing zone. We didn't have to add a whole bunch, and there is an ornamental plum that is fairly small over in this vicinity right here. So it's a whole mix of variety of species. And especially the oaks and the Victoria box live on both sides of that property line.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Phillips?
A guest question for Staff, Mr. Chair. The, the Bocce Ball and trellis issue, if it's not, if it's a violation and not yet permitted, did MBAR look at that sighting, look at that issue for alternative sightings? Or did they say, this is premature for us, we don't recognize it, it's not, it's not legal, we're not dealing with it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, MBAR did consider the fact that the Bocce trellis was existing in the photographs that they reviewed. They were aware that the structure was existing and did consider the options, whether that be to reduce it in size, eliminate it altogether, or it would be incumbent upon the applicant to come back if they wanted to locate it in a, in a different area. I would point out that the option for locating that accessory structure in the area of the driveway would be limited, basically because that's a, a front yard setback. It's a corner lot and has that setback.
But MBAR looked at all of that.
My recollection of their discussion was not options for relocating. They were reviewing the plan that was before them, but they were aware that it was built without the benefit of a permit by the county and was a violation.
But that didn't change their review. They, they looked at it as if it was proposed, in that they could condition it, have effect on it. Is that true?
I would say that's true. Ms. Almy might have a better recollection, being that she was there for, for the whole thing.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I was there, sitting with the MBAR during these hearings, and the MBAR looked at the trellis and was very deliberate in their, in their analysis. And the reason they removed the lights was because they felt that while the trellis and the Bocce Ball Court were in appropriate relationship to the house and the yard and the amenities on site during the daytime, they felt that it was inappropriate as a use area at night. So they did distinctly discuss the location of it, timing of it, and that's why they took the lights away. It was very deliberate.
And they looked at the screening opportunity?
They did look at the screening. Their interest was primarily in privacy, because the, the circumstances, two backyards fronting each other. And so they looked at privacy, and their intent was to, to approve a variable screen that provided privacy and yet was, as I said, variable in height, so that there could be views over it to the mountains from the Stone's house.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question for Staff. Besides approving the appeal or denying the appeal, what are some of our other options?
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, this is before you de novo on both the Montecito BAR's approval, as well as Staff's land use approval. So your Commission can choose to condition this differently than is presented to you in addition to approving it as submitted or denying it?
Okay. So I turn to my colleagues. Do you want to start deliberating, or should we take any more testimony? Mr. Stone's up there, let's hear what he has to say.
Thank you. I just had one thing. My, my recollection of the various MBAR meetings is slightly different. They're, I believe they're recorded, there's a record which can be looked at. But, but Ms. Almy's presentation as to the final decision, I, I agree with, is accurate. But there were many, many comments along the way, many of which that did not get into the minutes, about concerns about it. And they, there was definitely concern and recognition that the fact that it was standing and built, they weren't quite sure what to do with it. They weren't, is it wasteful to order it taken down? Is it not? And I believe firmly that the fact that it was pre-existing, whether violation or not, did impact the decision.
Okay. We have one more request from the landscape man? Go ahead, tell us what you have.
Just one.
Identify yourself, please.
Robert Adams, landscape architect. I just wanted to say that, at, at that final hearing where we received final approval, they did condition it to add vines to the posts at the trellis, which we, we, we will do. So to help soften that trellis. So I just want to say there is some landscape softening that they required of that. So that's, that's on there now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the, my position is going to be to unfortunately deny the appeal, unfortunately for the Stones. I completely sympathize with where you are, and you pointed it out. We're, we're getting more intense, we're getting closer, and we're getting noisier. I, I find that, I think we have a, a, a big hurdle here to overturn MBAR. Their review process is important, it looked appropriate to me. The, the screening issue, it seems to me, can be resolved by an easement which will run with the land, much better than us hoping that that height limitation's recognized 10 years from now. We just don't have enforcement for that. So the easement's your best move, and if that can work out. The only thing you're not getting is, is a new site on the Bocce Ball Court, and it looks like MBAR looked at it. So I'm going to have to vote to deny.
Commissioner Gostaker?
It's kind of interesting for me, because I do remember when the Stone project came through. I remember working with Mrs. Sipple and the neighbors there, so I have a huge history with... So I have a huge history with both of these projects. My personal take on this is, as many people know, I really, 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 really dislike being put in the position of approving an as-built. You know, this is like, it shows up over and over again. And right now, you know, I can't do that. I am unwilling to actually hold up the appeal on this, given, if there could be some way to get rid of the trellis, I have no problem with the bocce ball court. I actually have a bocce ball court. I have neighbors who have bocce ball courts. Nobody has trellises. It's an outdoor sports court, you know, and it does not need a structure. It doesn't. In order to play bocce ball, you do not need a trellis, you know. I foresee that what will happen with the next owner is the lights will go up. It's very clear the lights will go up. This is, we face this throughout, through Montecito. You know, is that landscape projects and plans come before MBAR or they come before us? By the way, as many of you know, I sat on MBAR for a number of years, so I've seen them over and over again. There's no plans for lighting, and then two years later, when you drive by, in fact, the whole site is lit up with no plans, you know. And the county does not have the funds to continue to enforce, you know. So for me, I could go ahead and approve the project without the trellis, you know. And that way I would put a condition on the project to remove the trellis, you know. Other than that, I will have to vote to, is it uphold the appeal or not uphold? Whichever. I think it's clear. I'm getting confused here. Yeah, thank you. So that, for me, that's where I'm at, you know.
Okay, I guess I'm the one left for a decision, too. Excuse me. I'm trying to get my throat cleared up. But you know, like I mentioned before, when we build these large homes on small parcels and we try to build them on the highest part of the lot, then we do want to have our privacy, but we also want to have our public view. And it starts to develop a whole series of problems that can best be resolved on a neighbor-to-neighbor basis. But we're faced here with having to determine whether the appeal should be upheld or denied. I'm going to have to come down on denying the appeal, as I see it. And with the hopes that, since it's that the neighbors can work out some kind of a view easement, some type of a thing, I'm not as concerned about the trellis issue. I don't see that as being as major as maybe my colleagues do. But I do feel that the noise is something that's going to go with us. I have a neighbor that just put a pool in that's, I'm on an acre and a half, and it's about 15 feet from my property line, and it does create noise. But I know they have a right to enjoy their property, and so it's part of the game. And we're developing these lots out to such an extent now. And that's pretty much uniform all over Montecito. People want to get the use of it. It's their home, it's their retreat, and they want to do all these different things into them. So it's so totally different than what we had years ago. And it's not going to go back. And we call it semi-rural. I don't really call it semi-rural, no. It's not at all. It's very suburban in our community. We may not have a lot of sidewalks and streetlights, but the housing is there. The landscaping has been brought in. High tall trees have been built. Big hedges grow up, so all of these issues are a problem. And so my particular position right now would be to deny the appeal.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion. Unless you want to continue debate.
Make the motion.
I move to deny the appeal, case number 12 APL string zeros 10. Make the required findings for approval. Determine that the project is exempt from SEQA. And approve the project case number 11 BAR string zero 201 and the land use permit string zero 475, subject to the conditions included as attachment B.
Staff, see any change in the wording there before we proceed forward?
Mr. Chair, no, I mean, that's a perfectly acceptable motion.
Okay, we'll see if it'll go. Do I have a second for the motion? I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. The motion has a second. Appropriate. Okay, let's take a vote. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gottstinker.
Commissioner Phillips.
Yes.
And Commissioner Idelson.
Yes.
Motion passes, two to one.
Mr. Chair, I think that concludes the Commission's business today. So I think you can go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion for adjournment.
I move, will you adjourn?
Okay, it's done.